Good evening. Today is Monday, December 8th, 2025. I call to order a meeting of the Brockton City Council. Will everyone please rise and join me in honoring our country by saluting our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, agenda item number one, please.
First item is the public hearing on the question of adoption of the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property for fiscal year 2026.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Mr. Clerk, did anybody sign up for the public's hearing?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Looking, anybody in the audience would like to come forward and speak on this matter? Seeing none, I declare this portion of the hearing closed.
Item one on the agenda is the appointment of Scott Ullman of 142 Cashman Road, Brockton, Mass. as Chairman of the Brockton License Commission for a three-year term ending in November 2028. And councilors, before we get a motion, I just want to explain to the public, this actually was a little bit of a miscommunication between the mayor's office. This is just a communication that you'll get. Mr. Ullman is already on the board, so you don't vote for that. The mayor appoints the chairman of the board. So even though we had it here for you to vote on, I'm going to ask for a motion to table this because you do not vote on this.
Motion to table.
He is an existing member already.
Second.
Motion is made and properly seconded to table this matter. All in favor of tabling? Anyone opposed? Matter's tabled.
Item two, we have the appointment of Aurelia Emboyo of Albert Street Apartment 1, Brockton, Mass. to the Women's Commission for a three-year term ending in December 2028.
Refer to Finance.
We have a hearing on the petition of Teen Challenge New England for a garage license transfer located at 12 Clifton Ave., Brockton, in city clerk's office, October 27th, 2025. Hearing assigned for October 27, 2025. All paperwork is on file. Postponed to City Council meeting November 10, 2025. In-city Council meeting November 10, 2025. Postponed to City Council meeting December 8, 2025.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Counselina Castro.
Thank you. Mr. President, at this time, I, the party is not ready yet. And so I ask for a postponement to the next council meeting in two weeks.
Motion is, second.
Yeah.
Motion is made, properly seconded, and postponed this matter to the next city council hearing. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Matter's postponed.
Thank you.
Item four is a petition of Teen Challenge New England Inc. for motor vehicle mechanical repair license transfer located at 12 Clifton Ave., Brockton, in city clerk's office, October 27, 2025. Hearing assigned for October 27, 2025. All paperwork is on file. Postponed to City Council meeting November 10, 2025. In-city Council meeting November 10, 2025. Postponed to City Council meeting December 8, 2025.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Counselina Castro.
Thank you. At this time, I make a motion to postpone this to the next city council meeting. They're not quite ready.
Second.
Motion is made, properly seconded, and postponed this matter. All in favor of postponement? Anyone opposed? Matter's postponed to the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
Item five, we have the report of the ordinance committee for its meeting of November 25, 2025.
Except and placed on file.
We have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of December 1, 2025.
Except and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor appointing Scott D. Ullman of Cashman Road, Brockton, Mass. as Chairman of the Brockton License Commission for a three-year term ending in November 2028.
Except and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor appointing Aurelia Emboyo of Albert Street, Brockton, Mass. to the Women's Commission for a three-year term ending in December 2028.
Except and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor requesting a waiver of the city of Brockton's residency requirement for Officer Spencer Benoit. Officer Benoit has over seven years of combined service as a police officer and a Brockton resident. He has a young family, and due to speech therapy needs for his daughter, he is requesting the waiver.
Except and placed on file.
Communication from the fire chief requesting from the Brockton Fire Department to accept and expend a total of $323,822.71 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. The fire department intends to use these grant funds for overtime necessary to maintaining staffing levels. This is a non-matching grant with no cost to the city.
Except and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Except and filed.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Except and filed.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the amount of $175,688 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to the Council on Aging.
Except and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Except and filed.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the amount of $13,000 from the Old Colony Planning Council to the Council on Aging. These funds will be used for support of the Council on Aging's exercise program.
Except and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Except and filed.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council accepts the lease agreement entered into with New England Golf Cars, a corporation which has an address of 62 Industrial Waste Seekonk, Mass.
Except and filed.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Except and filed.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the approval of prior-year unpaid bills of $44,134.24. These funds will be used to pay invoices from FEA 25.
Except and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Except and filed.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the proposed transfer of $41,181.50. This appropriation provides funding for one year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, of a one-year contract. This is a reasonable and financially sustainable settlement for the city.
Except and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Except and filed.
Unfinished business. We have an ordinance amending Article 3, Section 2-1, Section 2-137, Vacation Leave. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. Article 3, Section 2-137, Vacation Leave is hereby amending, amended by changing the title from Vacation Leave to Vacation Leave and Personal Days, as attached. In-city Council, April 28, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable. In-city Council, August 25, 2025, referred back to the Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable as amended.
Counselors, the question is on passage to a third reading as amended by hand vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Matter passes.
Item 24, ordinance amendment to the zoning map for parcel IDs identified. Be it ordained pursuant to Section 27-5 of the city ordinance's zoning map, whereby reference is made to an incorporation of said boundaries of each of the zones established as shown on the map entitled "The City of Brockton, Massachusetts Zoning District Map," dated November 10, 1967, and thereafter amended, that said map be amended to reflect the following zoning change. Parcel ID 133-0002, R1 Current to R1/R5 Zone. Parcel ID 133-003, R1 Current to R1/R5 Zone. Parcel ID 175-160, R1 Current to R1/R5 Zone. Parcel ID 175-003, R1 Current to R1/R5 Zone. Parcel ID 174-376, R1 Current to R1/R5 Zone. In-city Council, September 22, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Ordinance and Planning. That report was favorable. In-city Council, October 14, 2025, passed to a third reading. In-city Council, November 24, 2025, postponed as amended to the next city council meeting.
Counselors, the question is on ordination as amended by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is ordained.
Item 25, appointment of Fay Slaton of Norwood Street, Brockton, Mass. as an alternate on the, excuse me, on the Board of the Brockton Council on Aging for a three-year term ending in November 2028. In-city Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question is on confirmation by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is confirmed.
Item 26, we have the appointment of F. Peter Gaskins of Country Club Lane, Brockton, Mass. to the Cemetery Board of Trustees for a five-year term ending in November 2029. In-city Council, November 10, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, again, the question is on confirmation by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 28, ordered that the city council authorizes the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $68,000 from Mass DEP to Department of Public Works Refuse. In-city Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 29, ordered in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council approve the expenditure of $293,453.44 from DPW Refuse Purchase of Services, DPW Stormwater Purchase of Services, DPW Highway Purchase of Services, DPW Highway Goods and Supplies, to Republic Services, to Apex Engineering, to Sprague, to Stephen Gogan. In-city Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
No.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative, one in opposition.
The order is adopted.
Item 30, ordered in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending the city council approve the expenditure of $72,842.93 from Sewer Goods and Supplies, from Sewer Purchase of Services, to Eastern Sling and Supply, Hughes, Inc., Equipment East, Britta Rely Brother LLC, FedEx, Brockton Police Department, Core &amp; Main, Altus Power, Holbrook Police Department, and Plimpton Police Department. In-city Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Castro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 31, ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows. Appropriation of $13,760.20 from Human Resources Benefits to Public Property Personal Service Non-Overtime. In-city Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report
Nacastro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative, one in opposition.
The order is adopted.
Ordered in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council approve the expenditure of $72,275.48 from Water Goods and Supplies, from Water Purchase of Service, to Corin Maine, Altus Power, John Hodley &amp; Sons, Ty Sales, Woodward Auto Parts, Brockton Police, Plimpton Police, Everett's Auto Parts, and Equipment East. In City Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Nacastro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Eleven and the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 33, ordered that the following names sum be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: transfer of $134,735 from Certified Free Cash to DPW Refuge Retained Earnings. In City Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, if there's no objection, I'm going to ask the CFO to come forward and to give further explanation on this agenda item. Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, Counselors. As I mentioned at the Finance Committee, when you passed this, passing this finally is contingent upon the certification of free cash. We did provide that to the Department of Revenue, but they have not yet certified the free cash. We do expect it to be completed tomorrow. So I would ask that you postpone this and take it up at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. CFO.
Motion to postpone.
Second. Motion is made properly seconded to postpone this matter to the next City Council meeting. All in favor of postponement? Anyone oppose? This matter is postponed.
Item 34, ordered that the following names sum be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: appropriation of $100,000 from Human Resources Benefits to Fire Personal Services Non-Overtime. In City Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question is adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
No.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Nacastro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative, one in opposition.
The order is adopted.
Item 35, ordered that the following names sum be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: transfer of $3388,863 from Pension Stabilization Fund to Retirement Contributory Pension. In City Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question is on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ezak.
Yes.
Darren Ancourt.
No.
Farwell.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Minicello.
Yes.
Nacastro.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Tavares.
Yes.
Texera.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ten and the affirmative, one in opposition.
The order is adopted.
Ordered in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council approve the expenditure of $72,275.48 from Water Goods and Supplies, from Water Purchase of Service, to Corin Maine, Altus Power, John Hodley &amp; Sons, Ty Sales, Woodward Auto Parts, Brockton Police, Plimpton Police, Everett's Auto Parts, and Equipment East. In City Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselor Farwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, I was ill last week and unable to attend the meeting of FINCOM, and I understand this came up during FINCOM. I'd like to step back for a minute and take a second look at this. I sent an email out on December 4 asking for information about what are we paying for? To whom are we issuing checks for $1.6 million and taking the money out of free cash, which can be used for any reason? And I didn't get an answer, but fortunately Counselor Nacastro sent out a message today, and she did get an answer back from the city auditor. And from what we're told, as requested, and I'm reading from the email, as requested, here is what makes up the deficit transfer plus the previous fiscal year numbers. So apparently, starting in fiscal year '21 and continuing into fiscal year '25, the Brockton Redevelopment Authority ran deficits in community development block grant funds, home funds, and lead paint funds. And in particular, in fiscal year '25, in the lead paint program, $683,886.42 for a deficit. In the home funds program, $118,145.80 for a deficit. And for the CDBG program, $779,883.66 for a deficit. So now we're taking money from free cash, which can be used for any reason in this city, and we're paying to offset deficits that were incurred by the Brockton Redevelopment Authority. I do understand that there is an investigation or a review going on, but I want to know where the money went. Where did $779,883.66 go in fiscal year '25, paid out of Brockton Redevelopment Authority authorization? Who received the money? What vendor? In what amount? And I think that we would be abdicating our responsibility to track this deficit spending and to find out where the money went if we just perfunctorily approve this appropriation tonight and let the bills be paid. So what I would propose is, and I won't make the motion until I hear from others, that this matter be postponed until the next City Council meeting, and we ask that the appropriate information be submitted to us. I mean, $1.6 million is a lot of money. And as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, not one of us has received any itemized listing of where the money is being paid, in what amount, to what vendor, and for what purpose. So I'll make the appropriate motion, unless someone has something else they'd like to say.
Second.
Counselor, just, I believe the process today was going to be to postpone it because free cash has not yet been certified. Maybe another alternative is if you wanted more in-depth conversation, we could refer it back to finance for next week, where we could bring the matter back before us, maybe have those answers questioned in open counsel. If not, then we can move forward with just postponing it to the next City Council meeting.
Mr. President, whatever we need to do to get the requisite information to understand what we're doing with $1.6 million, I'm in favor of it. So I would be very happy to refer this back to FINCOM. Motion to refer back to FINCOM.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just don't want to be, you know, I don't want this to be a long debate tonight, but I just want to put on the record that I back up 100% what my colleague, you know, stated. I think it would be, you know, to the benefit of the people here to understand, you know, why are we taking money from this place and sending it to another place? So I just want to have it on the record that I am 100% back of what Counselor Farwell just stated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselors. Counselor's motion is made properly seconded to refer this matter back to FINCOM. All in favor? Anyone oppose? This matter is referred back to FINCOM.
Item 37, resolved, be it resolved to invite the Executive Director and Chairman of the Board of the Brockton Community Access to appear before the Finance Committee of the Brockton City Council to discuss the recent inability to cover the Brockton municipal elections, as well as the continuing poor coverage of the Brockton Municipal Government Meetings, as well as any other coverage deemed appropriate by the City Council. In City Council, November 24, 2025, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question is on adoption by roll call vote. Excuse me, by hand, says roll call. Question is on adoption by hand vote. All in favor? Anyone oppose? The resolve is adopted.
May I abstain, Mr. President, on this one?
Well, make that on the record. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Item 38, ordered a waiver of the City of Brockton's residency requirements under Section 2-110 of the City Ordinance's for Officer Spencer Benoit.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered that the City Council authorizes the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $323,822.71 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Brockton Fire Department.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered that the City Council authorizes the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $175,688 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to the Council on Aging.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered that the City Council authorizes the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $13,000 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs to the Council on Aging.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered that the City Council authorizes the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $13,000 from the Old Colony Planning Council to the Council on Aging.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 14, and the City of Brockton's Ordinance 2-157, the City of Brockton hereby accepts the lease agreement entered into with New England Golf Cars, a corporation which has an address of 62 industrial waste, Seekonk, Mass., for 74 new golf carts for DW Field Golf Course. Said lease agreement shall run for a five-year term, with payments beginning May 20, 2026, and ending October 2030. The mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary in connection with said lease agreement.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council approve the expenditure of $44,134.24 from Public Property Stadium Purchase of Service, $35,102.79 from Public Property Purchase of Service, $5,255.70 from Public Property Goods and Supplies, $3,775.75 to Annanea Plumbing, $13,367.79, to Quabin Well &amp; Pump, $18,735, to Verizon, $3,000, to United Security, $5,255.70, to Granite City, $3,775.75.
Prefer to finance.
Ordered that the following names sum be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: transfer of $41,181.50 from Human Resources Benefits, to Department of Public Works Sewer, $14,461.20, to Department of Public Works Water, $26,181.30.
Prefer to finance.
Mr. Clerk, sorry.
Counselor Ezak.
I just, I believe Mr. Clerk said $41,000. It's $40 on here.
The transfer is for $41,181.50.
Okay.
From Human Resources.
I think that was an update on this agenda. I think our previous agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we caught that correction. Item 45, ordered that the City Council hereby determines the percentages of the local tax levy for FY 2026 in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to be borne by each class of real property as defined in Section 2way of Chapter 59, and personal property.
Counselors, I'm going to call forward our City CFO and our City Assessor to talk about the tax classification matter. Good evening, Mr. CFO, Mr. Assessor.
Good evening, Mr. President, and thank you. I'll give you a brief introduction and then pass things along to Chairman of the Board of Assessors, John O'Donnell. As you know, this is something that the City Council is asked to do every year, and what you're doing tonight is agreeing to what's called the factor, meaning you take a vote of how to distribute the tax levy. As you know, the levy is the maximum amount of property taxes that we can tax the property owners in this city every year. That's divided up into the classes that you see here in the packet that was provided to you by Mr. O'Donnell: residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. Approximately 86% of the property in Brockton is residential. And so what this vote does, on an annual basis, you have the ability to distribute how those taxes are assessed to those different classes, meaning you can change the amount that each class is taxed to either increase or relieve the burden on other classes.[1458.21] burden on other classes. What you have chosen to do for the last several years is to adjust that classification to lessen the burden on the residential taxpayers of this city. And gradually, over the last several years, that number has been increased to, last year, providing the maximum benefit to residential taxpayers in this city, or what we call a factor of 1.75. And so the extensive information here in your packet provides detail on the total valuation, what the tax rates have historically been, and what different votes could mean in terms of the distribution of that tax burden. So simply, what we're asking you to do tonight is to decide on a tax factor, meaning what that distribution is between the classes, and then we have the numbers of how that will impact the tax rate for each of those classes. And with that, Mr. President, I will pass to Mr. O'Donnell.
Good evening, Counselors. I'd like to make a brief statement concerning the fiscal year 2026 classification hearing. First, I'd like to thank the entire staff of the Assessors Office for their support and assistance throughout this year. The purpose of this hearing is to establish the proportion of the tax levy raised by the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. Under Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 56, we're required to do this yearly. The assessed values for fiscal year 2026 represent the estimate of market value as of January 1, 2025, utilizing verified sales data from calendar year 2024. Assessments represent 100% of market value as required by Mass. General Law. The Department of Revenue has certified the real and personal properties for the city, as well as the new growth value. The assessors are required to fairly assess 27,518 parcels and accounts in the city. There are 24,276 residential parcels, 1,711 commercial parcels, commercial and industrial parcels, and 1,553 personal property accounts. The total taxable value of all real and personal property in the city for the fiscal year 2026 is just over $14 billion, which is an 8.21 increase from fiscal year 2025, and is the highest total taxable value ever for the City of Brockton. This year, the city added a total of $2,421,975 in new growth tax dollars in residential, commercial, and personal property. The residential class total value increased 8.29%. The commercial class total value increased 6.36%. The industrial class total value increased 13.59%, and the personal property class total value increased 8.0%. People often associate rise in assessments with rise in taxes. However, this is not the case. Rising budgets cause rising taxes. If the budget increases, typically taxes increase. The assessed value represents the market value of all properties. If all assessments went down 25% and the budget increased, taxes would still increase. The purpose of tonight's tax classification hearing is to adopt a residential factor. The City Council will decide on how much of the tax levy the owners of the residential properties will pay, and how much of the tax levy the owners of the commercial, industrial, and personal property paid. This decision is what creates two tax rates, or a split rate in the City of Brockton. The split rate in the City of Brockton taxes commercial, industrial, and personal property at a higher rate than residential properties. If there was no shift, there would be one rate, and based on this year's levy, the single rate for the City of Brockton would be $13.28. Last year, last November, the City Council voted to set the fiscal year 2025 shift factor at 1.75. This meant for 2025, commercial, industrial, and personal properties, while representing only 14.22% of the total taxable value, paid 24.88% of the total taxes. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Assessor, Mrs. CFO, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen. I have no questions directly, but maybe you could just back up my numbers as I present them. But Counselors, this evening, I'm going to seek a factor shift of 173. And what that'll do is, this will result in a $19 increase for single-family homes from the tax factor of 175, which is a little less than $5 per quarter. But what that will do is, it will result on a medium difference, a medium reduction of $234 for our businesses. Now, it's no doubt that for everyone, costs have risen, but that's also true for our business owners. And for the past five years, this council has shifted the max tax burden onto our businesses. Now, today, we have an opportunity to provide some relief to our existing businesses and those who seek to open a business in Brockton. Now, this council often talks about Brockton being more business-friendly, and this evening, we can show that commitment with our actions and not just our words. Counselors, we need to be, we need to be a little more business-friendly. I think a shift of 173 is a small increase from 175 to our residences, but it provides a much larger reduction for our businesses. And I think in this environment, in this year, because this is not always the case. In the last few years, a 175 factor has resulted in a decrease both for residents and commercial. This is an opportunity to get a little more bang for our buck for our businesses, and that's why I seek a tax factor of 173. Mr. Assessor, maybe you could speak about those numbers, about what our shift has been over the last five years, how that's impacted our businesses, both pros and cons, and how this year's numbers kind of work out a little bit differently where a small shift of $19 a year can result in a $230 difference for our businesses.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so like you said, the last five years, the shift is 175. And so go back to 2021 was the first year that you went to 175. Single families values, single families' tax bill increased $93, but the commercial tax bills decreased $428. 22, single families went up 267, but commercial went down $821. 23, single families went up $884, and commercial went down 131. 24, singles went up 115, commercials went up 528, and last year, singles went up 211, and commercial went up 273. So the commercials did benefit, the first three years of the shift, the commercials did benefit.
And now it's as, as...
Now it's shifting the other...
Now it's shifting where the burden is becoming a much bigger factor on our businesses.
The residential values have gone up a lot more than the commercial values.
Thank you for that, Mr. Assessor. I don't know, Mr. CFO, if you had anything to add?
No, I think John certainly answered the question adequately. As I mentioned in my introduction, this is really a policy question for the City Council, so the decision rests solely with you about how you want to distribute that tax burden.
Right. Thank you, Mr. CFO. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Farwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand where my colleague, the Council President, is coming from, but I think we have to be resident-friendly. It's one thing to be business-friendly, but I think we have to be resident-friendly. And coast-to-coast, the word we hear is affordability. Everything is going up for people, whether it's transportation costs, whether it's clothing, homeowner's insurance, transportation costs. Everything is squeezing people to a point where some of the people in this city live paycheck to paycheck, and they live from social security check to social security check. And when we talk about being business-friendly, let's not forget that we offer tax increment exemptions. I mean, we're pretty generous with, with what we do for businesses that want to come into the city, and then they want to offset some of the increase in taxes for which they would ordinarily be subjected, and we enter into a 10-year tax increment exemption agreement. In addition, I mean, let's face it, the state provides low-income housing tax credits. There are a lot of different programs that benefit businesses, but what do we do for the middle-class homeowner who would like to buy a $550,000 house here in Brockton and become part of the community? We don't offset any of their tax liability, and if they should invest in their property and they increase its value, eventually, we're going to tax that. They're going to pull building permits, and we're going to catch up with them. So to me, I think of all of the times when you need to retain that 175 factor and give a break to homeowners, it's right now. I simply do not believe that we can talk about increasing the real estate burden, and then we have debates going on about the trash fees, and then we have debates going on about the water fees, and then we have debates going on about sewer fees. And you know what? Some people, at some point, people just can't keep up. They simply cannot keep up in the aggregate with everything that's being demanded of them. So I would hope that we would retain the 175 factor, while I have great respect for Counselor Thompson even raising this issue. He probably has a little more political courage than I do. I just don't see it happening now. I don't see it as appropriate right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tavares, followed by Counselor Castro and Counselor Azak.
Hello, good evening. Actually, thank you for being here. I am 100% you know, decked with my colleague. Basically, like I'm just going to talk about Ward 2, he's totally right. The room owner, I think we should have kind of worked with them because everything becomes so high right now. The mortgage has become very high, the tax, the water, like everything, and the income's still the same. I think the priority right now is just kind of to focus with the, you know, tax fear, like, you know, room owner, kind of like that, to see if they can keep the roof under the bridge, not to be under the bridge. I am very blessed to have Michelle and Rita, like, you know, every Thursday, still working with me, to still try to find out the resource for community, stuff like that. It's so hard. Sometimes, some of them, they get approved, sometimes some of them not get approved. And many times, so the landlord, you know, struggle to get the rent to the tenant, you know, it's got to go through all the process, court process, and then they late on the mortgages as well. We went through so much hardship right now. I think, like, you know, it's a great idea to kind of focus with the, you know, room owners, like, you know, not kind of with the business, kind of like that. I'm not saying business because, business of course, we need a business, but at this point, I think we should have kind of literally focused with the middle class because things is getting hard. Thank you so much. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Castro.
Thank you. Gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm, I'm stuck in the middle seeing both sides because I am desperate to bring more commercial activity into the city because by doing so, we will ultimately lower our residential rate and, and help our residents. But at the same time, right now, our residents are, there's so many uncontrolled expense increases, not just in Washington, but especially in Washington. There was a really moving report this morning on NPR about how much people's medical insurance is going to go up unless Congress acts and poor Congress can't get out of their own way. So I just want to say that I appreciate Counselor Thompson's position, but, but people have to come first. I, my heart aches for some of our commercial businesses, but I think right now, it's our residents that we have to think of. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Azak.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. So I just, I agree with my colleagues, all of them. Counselor, I see Counselor Thompson's point. I think he's trying to make it a little more attractive for businesses, and I agree with him as five out of the 10 top taxpayers that are on the list are located in Ward 7. So, you know, so it's, it's, we want to see more. We want to make it, you know, more appealing for businesses to come into the city. But at the same time, as Counselor Farwell stated, our homeowners are, many of them are suffering and living paycheck to paycheck. So, and this has got to be the toughest meeting that in 12 years, it's the toughest one to, that we go through because, you know, we're trying to make the best decisions we can for the residents and business owners. I have just, if, is it possible to get a breakdown of, so people at home can hear, what the difference is between the 1.75 for residents and businesses and the 1.74 compared to 1... I know Counselor Thompson stated the 1.73.
How much did it go up?
Just the breakdown of what it would, how, what it would go up in...
At 1.74, single families' average bill would be, go up $223.77. The two families would go up $220.85. Three families would go up $444.85. Commercial would go up $784.38, and industrials would go up $2,663.22.
That's for the 1.74 factor?
That's 1.74.
And the 1.75?
1.75, $214.16 for single families. Two families, $207.85. Three families, $429.94. Commercial will go up $879.75. Excuse me, and industrial will go up $2,779.25.
Okay. Thank you. I know in your, and thank you for the booklet, it's really full of information. I don't remember receiving all this information in past years, so it's really, I'm finding it really nice. Thank you. I see that there's new growth, but the percentage is really low. I think, what was it, 2% or something for new growth?
New growth was $2.4 million, which is...
Oh, $2.4 million, okay.
Yeah, that's...
And what, what's the majority of that? What...
The majority is personal property, all the work that National Grid and Eversource has been doing in the city.
Okay.
That's where the majority of it comes from. It's broken down. Let me, I can give you a breakdown.
Page 16. Page 16? Mm-hmm.
So the residential class had new growth of $567,773. Commercial was $336,949. Industrial only had $34,047, and personal property new growth was $1,483,83,206.
Okay, thank you. And on the top taxpayers, in past years, it's been, it's usually like the Brockton Hospital. I didn't see them on here. The, where have they fallen?
Sam doesn't pay. That's another reason why the, I should have mentioned that before, why the commercial. So good Sam's assessed value doesn't go away. It stays in the levy. Is that best, put your best...
Yeah.
It stays there. So that's been redispersed among all properties in the City of Brockton. So it doesn't decrease. The tax dollars decreased, but...
Okay, and Brockton Hospital, now that they're back?
Brockton Hospital never pay taxes.
They don't? Okay, okay. Okay. I mean, I, like I said, I understand to make it, you know, we want to appeal to businesses to come into the city. I know we've lost a few in the past year or so that have decided to leave the city, but I just hope we make the right decision this evening. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If there's no other Counselor who hasn't spoken yet, I am going to go to the second round. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, and I'll make a brief. So just, just two things. I mean, I'm not oblivious to my fellow Counselors and colleagues' argument. Costs have risen. It is getting tough. But the increases, you know, it's a $19 increase for the year, which is a little less than $5 per quarter. And so I know that's nothing. I mean, I know that's not anything, or no, it's not nothing, but the bang for the buck in the return for our businesses is about, you know, is threefold for our businesses. Secondly, our seniors are afforded the 41C exemption. And just to, one thing about our tie agreements, our tie agreements are mainly aimed towards our residential developments. Those are the ones who the majority are getting our tie agreements. We have very little incentive for our businesses, and I think that 173 factor will show our businesses, both existing and those wanting to come to Brockton, that we are business-friendly and that we do take their concerns into account. But I'll, you know, it will be the will of this council. But on that, just to get it started, I will make a motion for a factor of 173.
Motion's been properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded for a factor of 1.3. Yeah.
Roll call.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Azak?
No.
Darren Oncourt?
No.
Farwell?
No.
Griffin?
No.
Lally?
No.
Minicello?
No.
Castro?
No.
Rodriguez?
No.
Tavares?
No.
Texera?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in opposition, one in the affirmative.
All right, the motion fails. Counselors, any other motions? Counselor Farwell?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we retain a factor of 175 for the upcoming tax year.
A second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Darren Oncourt? Farwell?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, I move reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion for reconsideration's been properly made and seconded. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed. Reconsideration fails. Now, I'm going to call a...
I'm going to just read what the order now becomes. You've done the tax factor. So, ordered that the City Council hereby determines the percentages of the local tax levy in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to be borne by each class of real property as defined in Section 2A of Chapter 59, and personal property, which results in a division of residential of 75.2323%, commercial 15.7115%, industrial 3.4416%, personal property 5.6147%, for a total of 100% for the tax classification. And you have passed that and reconsidered. We now need an order to, and this is a technicality, but we need someone to make a motion to accept, to approve the tax class order.
Motion to accept the tax class order.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded to accept the tax class order. That's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Darren Oncourt?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative, one in opposition.
The order is accepted.
That's it.
All right. Mr. President? Mr. President?
Counselor Lally.
Reconsideration on the tax order.
Okay, I'd like to take a, make a motion for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion is made properly seconded for reconsideration on the tax order. All in favor of reconsideration. Anyone oppose? Reconsideration fails.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, introduce a late file.
Counselor...
Second.
Motion is made properly seconded, accept a late file. All in favor, accept a late file. Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.
I have a communication from the Fire Chief requesting a transfer of $400,000.0 from unused sick leave, $300,000.0 from shift differential, $300,000.0 from holiday premium, and $300,000.0 from vacation buyback, for a total of $1,300,000.0 to regular overtime account to maintain all companies through the remainder of the fiscal year 2026.
Settle and place on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Settle and filed.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Settle and filed.
Ordered that the following names some be and the same is hereby transferred as the same was submitted by the mayor as follows: Transfer of $1,300,000 from Fire Personal Service Non-Overtime to Fire Personal Service Overtime.
Refer to Finance.
And that's all I have.
Counselors, I'll open it up for Counselor recognition. Any counsel like to be recognized? Seeing...
Seeing none, with all, with all, no further city business before this council, I declare this meeting adjourned.